Alright, so aloha, this is Dave and you say your last name again, so I don't mess it up.
Yeah, Dave Sutlathadius.
Right on and Dave, you are for the Green Party and what are you running for, where are you at?
So uh first of all, aloha Jordan, I'm in Rochester, New York. And I am running for Rochester City Council, there's five seats up. And so it's an at-large kinda thing, I just gotta be in the top five. And um I'll just say hey, I was all my friends back in Hawaii, I was there for a couple years on my way.
Nice, so you said there's five people, how many people are running for your uh seat?
There's uh, I lost track, it's at least twenty.
Oh wow, okay, cuz I'm in.
I'm the only green, but it there's at least twenty.
In Hawaii, I'm running for uh a neighborhood board. There's four seats and there's four people running, so I should I should get on there. Cool, cool, so um one of the things people ask me a lot is what are the Greens doing or what do the Greens do? In between the presidential election, like where's Jill Stein, where's Jill Stein, it's like almost all I ever hear. And so when I talked to you or emailed you before, you seem to be doing a lot. Could you tell?
That's so what most of the people who ask that pretty much get their news from mainstream corporate sources. And the only time they ever have greens on is to denigrate us, is to try to make us look bad, they never have us on just within the context. In this, in the context of just a regular election, in this campaign in Rochester, I'm gonna have to fight. To get uh at community forums, candidate forums, things like that. Because in this town, there hasn't been a non-democrat elected to city office in over forty years. Right, so what what happens with that is it's just assumed that it's going to be all Democrat. If you're a public, if you're, if you're, no matter what, how you're registered in Rochester, New York. If you decide you wanna run for office, the conventional wisdom is you go register Democrat. So we've had our last mayor, our current mayor is a banker. Our former mayor before that was um a real estate lawyer. Uh before that, it was the CEO who I'm sorry, I'm getting a little bit mixed orders, but uh the one in between them was the CEO. Of our end of our utility company that oversaw the selling of it. As a local corporation to a Spanish company and now our electrical rates are through the roof. And he became our mayor, so we have all of these Republican or corporate acting people. But in Rochester, you registered Democrat and that's all anybody wants to hear, so they're gonna cover the Democratic primary. And then there's gonna be crickets and there's still an election no in November and I'll be there. It'll be probably me against five Democrats.
Okay, and so your election is in November is when people are gonna need to vote?
Yep, yeah, it's that the general population gets to vote in November for this. So when folks are asking, well, what is Greens doing, what is Jill Stein doing when she's not running for president, well, look, you know what? This past year, uh over ninety people around the country, Greens ran for office and over fifty of them won. So when we when when we run in non-partisan races where people don't see parties, we win. On based on Green Party issues, so it's the way things are set up. So that we can't, everybody wants a third party, all these polls keep coming out, sixty percent, seventy percent want a third party. But they don't wanna do the work to make it happen, we need a Labor Party, have you seen the Green Party's platform? We need a a party that that is focused on the environment, have you seen the Green Party's platform? But if you don't vote for us, if you don't help us, if you don't contribute, if you don't tell your friends about the Green Party's campaigns. It's not magic, it's not just gonna happen, so Jill's been working, but she's not gonna be on CNN. She's not gonna be on MSNBC, she's not showing up in your feed unless you subscribe to her stuff. Then you'll know what's going on, if you latch onto the Green Party's Facebook page or. I won't call it X Twitter, whatever you wanna, you know, if you latch on to them. You'll see what Greens are doing, but don't count on the mainstream media to tell you what the Green Party is doing, they're not gonna tell you. They'll tell you when something goes bad. And then every party something, every group, you get a group of two people, something's gonna go wrong every once in a while, right? So that's all they're gonna report, they're not gonna tell you any of the stuff that we're doing, they're not gonna tell you that Greens are every Saturday, not just Greens. But with other community members in front of this corporation. That is a war profiteer in Rochester, we're out there in the snow, we were out there yesterday, man, it was cold. No matter what I wore, I had layers and it did not matter, it was cold and Greens are out there doing that every week with other people. But no one's gonna tell you about that.
Right, right, and so that's one of the things I'm trying to do with this channel and just like I reached out to you and I've reached out to other Greens. I'm just trying to get as many Greens as I can together. To tell their story, tell what they're doing and then see if I can get like. Say get you and Butch Ware on a program together, you and Jill Stein on a program together, so that way it boosts your notoriety. And then mine too or whatnot, but just just to get Greens out there and like you said. I came to the Greens about two or three months ago. Under the realization that like I was a big Bernie fan, I was real big under Barack Obama when the hope and change like I was like in my early twenties. And I thought that was great, like hope and change this and that, right? But so all this time I I kept going back to the Democratic Party once through Barack, twice through Bernie, right? And then after I was like, if you really, they're a corporate party and if you really want a people-powered party. The people have to get up and get in the Green Party or get in DSA or get in PSL. It's not gonna happen through the Democratic Party cuz we did get up and we did get in the Democratic Party and they shut us down, right? Like they just twice with Bernie real easy, that it was huge and like the second time, I didn't think it was gonna happen in twenty twenty like that. I didn't think that people were gonna get behind Bernie again and then they did and the Democrats ki- kicked us out again. And it's like Bernie's doing his thing now going around, have you seen that, how he's going around the south and? So I'm really, I've sent him a letter and I'm gonna try to get other Greens to send him a letter. To bring his movement to the Green Party, cuz if he gins up that movement and gets all these people riled up and ready to go. And he just gives it to the Democratic Party, we know it's gonna happen.
I yes, and I don't have high hopes, Bernie has been, hasn't been interested in talking with the Greens forever. He's he's really, if he does this time, great, uh you know, that's fine. Um I I won't go on my Bernie rant, I won't, I won't do that, I'd rather talk about positive things and things we can actually make happen. Don't have high hopes on that, I look, folks have come to the Greens from Bernie movement and the other way around. And and you know, there's been folks who have been Greens that saw Bernie, oh, maybe there's a hope on the inside. And they've left the Green Party and then politically you never hear from them again. Um this happens in Rochester too, that we've had people who long-time Greens, this is funny, so our number. I get, we can keep track of means there are in Monroe County in this county. Um cuz it's public information and our numbers stay the same. They don't, they barely go up or down at all, but we constantly lose older Greens. And we get in newer Greens, we're becoming younger here in Monroe County because the old Greens. And it's funny cuz most of them really haven't done anything to help the party, but they're tired of quote-unquote losing. But they haven't really done much, so they go to change things from the inside and then they still, they get frustrated when nothing actually changes. But these new people who are younger are coming in, I'm hoping that we, and it's our job as the people who've been around a little bit to kinda latch. Bring them in, so Jordan, in your case, you said it's just been a few months, so it's up to the people who've been in the party for a while. To embrace what you're doing and not go, huh, Bernie. I, yeah, I got some issues there with with how what had gone down with all that, both within the party and within Bernie's circle. But what am I gonna say, like to to say, oh, well, you came from Bernie, you're tainted or but. Any Greens doing that, they ought, stop it.
Well, I haven't had any of that, like I've been well-received and like I like uh. I've talked about, but you know, I only really brought it Bernie because he's doing this tour now, like before. I really didn't bring him up much, but like if he's gonna do that movement thing again, if he's gonna get all these people there. It's it's not gonna, if he gives it to the Democratic Party, it's just gonna go away. Like I just, I I see the momentum that he can create and he did it twice and now he's doing it again, I just feel like if if we could reach out to him. Or if we could even infiltrate the 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 rallies that he's having and have Green Party people go there and just talk to the crowd and be like, look. We have all these, these are, this is our our platform, right, that we're gonna do all this stuff he's talking about. So you guys need to get with us rather than the Democratic Party cuz we will foster this movement, we will feed it rather than the Democrats being like. No, we're gonna put in Hillary, or no, we're gonna put in Obama or Obama.
And so, okay, so I'll just give this about Bernie and then we can go on to some other stuff. So I accidentally stumbled upon this a a few years back. Uh I was, I had, I was working at the time, I'm usually I'm a teacher. An educator, but there was a little break in that and I was working in the disability rights movement. And I was doing some research on legislation for something else and what I stumbled upon was whenever he he is known for his, his. Tal- talking about single payer healthcare, by by whatever name you wanna call it, Medicare for All, whatever, single payer, anything. And so I stumbled upon one of his single payer bills and I noticed something, so I did some research. And I noticed that he only puts up his single payer bill when there's no chance of it getting voted on. John Conyers, who was known, but he's no longer with us, but who was known for his reparations bill. So I started looking at that, he only put that bill up when there was, when it was just when the Republicans were in charge of Congress. So there was no way it was gonna get voted on, when the Dems controlled everything, crickets. So I, yes, look, I'll give Bernie his credit, he can mobilize people, he gets people together, he gets them fired up. But the job he's doing in office is not what he's saying and so I get really frustrated with that. So when people are really into what Bernie's saying, they should be because what he says is some amazing stuff. And I'm down with all, not so much the war stuff, he said he's not a pacifist, so not the war stuff, but other than that. Absolutely, I'm on board, but dude, you gotta actually do it when you're in office and I'm running into that here, a city with city council in Rochester. Right, people who are activists and they they take that. I'm not gonna call it notoriety, but the they get known by being activists and they get elected to office and then they just go on the party line and they don't. Put up any legislation that would do any kinda systemic change. I know I'm gonna do that, man, if I get in the top five, man, I'm gonna have some fun.
So what what kinda fun are you gonna have, what are your like top two or three issues that you wanna push if you get on uh if you get in?
Yeah, well, I'll tell you this, so originally for this campaign, this is my fifth time running for anything, this is my third time for city council.
Have you won before?
No, no Democrat, no non-Democrats for forty years. I ain't that old, not that, so um I. My thought this time was going into housing is a human right and then something that was really new that nobody talks about, but universal childcare. And normally here in Monroe and New York State, childcare tends to be the the responsibility of counties, not cities. It's all these layers of government, but I actually wanna make it a city thing because we have recreation centers and we can start. Using those resources as free childcare for people in the city who need it the most. So I was gonna focus on those two things, but something's been coming up lately and I think I'm gonna pivot a little bit on this, so. Back in two thousand thirteen and two thousand nineteen when I ran, one of the ideas that I was promoting was a public utility. So I I talked earlier about how our electric company or gas electric company got sold off, was local and got sold off. To a a to Iberdrola, a Spanish conglomerate. And they've been horrible, their public, their their customer service has been horrible, they're accidentally billing people like ten thousand dollars a month. Right, you get a bill for ten thousand dollars and and like trying to get to anybody who will see that that's wrong. Takes months and meanwhile, they're threatening to shut off your power in the winter when they're not supposed to, it's just horrible. So because I'd already been talking about this public utility idea. And a local kind of local group with statewide ties. Kinda picked that up a few years ago and they're doing it so wrong, their strategy's been so bad. That so many people are complaining cuz it's the middle of winter and folks are getting. A nine hundred dollar utility bills in just a month that it's like doubled and tripled from just the past year.
What, so yeah, what is a normal utility bill?
Well, up here in Rochester, it's gonna depend on, you know, the size of your house, that our houses tend to be a little bit larger here cuz they're older. Um a lot of times there's in Ro- in the city of Rochester, it's like sixty-two percent uh of our people rent. They don't own their houses, so um it really depends on what the landlord's doing with the house. If you pay for the uh utilities or is included in the rent, so it's really, it's hard to say, but like I'll tell you, I. Well, I have a mortgage on my house, I own a mortgage. Um but we purposely have have not spent on other things to do solar and geothermal. And our our electricity bill, we have no gas, our electricity bill was, I just fact I'm gonna pay it today. About three hundred and sixty dollars. Which is okay, in the summertime, it's twenty-five.
Right, okay.
Cuz I'm running totally on solar for the most part and the geothermal heats and cools our house. Just using electricity and the heat from the uh the temperature from the earth, so. Um and and I was fortunate enough as a as because we're a two two-job family to be able to go into debt to do that. I wasn't able to pay for that outright, so um but we're as Greens taking that chance and just. Participating in capitalism to try and help the environment a little bit. So one of the issues, sorry, so Jordan, one of one of the issues that I wanna focus on is this public utility. So one of the first things I will do when in office, now I'm really gonna, I'm gonna try not to get too far into the weeds here. But the state procedure to get rid of the utility company and to have a publicly-owned utility company. You gotta have a feasibility study and there's five hundred thousand dollars sitting there. That city council has said, we're just gonna hold on to it and they're not gonna do the study, they're just holding on to this money. So my legislation will get this money going for the feasibility study, so we can get going.
And so is that money supposed to be for a feasibility study?
They gave themselves an out, they said for a feasibility study or to help anybody pay for their uh utility bills. But they never said how they were gonna use that money to help people pay, it's just sitting there. So they can say, hey, we're working on it, but they're not actually working on it, so when I get into office, I get in in January. Um if I win in November, I take office in January, one of the first things I will do is actually put up legislation to get this moving. And then if the other eight, cuz there's nine people on Rochester City Council, if they all voted down. They're gonna have to answer all these people with nine hundred dollar bills, why won't you get this on?
Right, right, and so you said earlier how Bernie would only try to do stuff when. The opposition was in power, like I was saying that now, how that Trump is in power and now you got all these Democrats. Talking like, oh, we need to lower prices, we need to do this and that when Joe Biden was in office a couple months ago, right? And he's been in office for four years and they didn't like force to vote on Medicare, they didn't, they didn't. Uh you know, try to raise minimum wage, pass UBI or you know, like you said, uh uh childcare, universal childcare or state-paid healthcare. Like whenever Democrats are in, people get quiet and people just, they they. They think it's okay cuz the Democrats are in and the Democrats won't hurt us too bad and so they just, they chill out and let the Democrats do nothing. And then the Republicans come in and then they do bad and the Democrats come in and they kinda make the bad not so bad. But then, but don't do nothing, right, they don't push for, like like you were saying, they. They do the big stuff or say they wanna do the big stuff when they know they can't do it.
But but they need money from you to do these things too, Jordan, so they'll they'll tax you for money.
Right, yes, they will ask you.
We we can't protect women's right to choose without your twenty-five dollars, well, man, you could've codified that for.
Under Obama or or Biden, either one of them, like Obama. Obama had such a huge, the the super majority when he got in. And then he got in and doing stuff, we probably just kept voting for Democrats, like FDR style. But he got in and told us to go home and not do nothing and just chill out and he'd take care of everything, but then he didn't do nothing, it was just like. I don't know, it's just like to me, the Democrats have shown over and over and over that they're not gonna. Do anything for us and that even even if we build a movement and give it to them, they just won't use it, they won't. They won't use the power that we even want to give them, that we try to give them. But like I, like you said, you're gonna do something, you get in office, you wanna do this public utility thing, that's what I wanna get across to people is that the Greens will get in. And will do what we say we're gonna do.
I look at, um I actually forgot if she's in office anymore, um she got turn limited out. But there was a while back where we had a Green as the mayor of Richmond, California. And she actually wrote a book about it and I'm so blanking on her name right now, I feel bad. Um and while she was in office, she just, she used eminent domain to go after Chevron. Because Richmond has a big uh Chevron has a lot of oil stuff there in in Richmond. And went after Chevron because they were polluting Richmond, California, like that they were killing people. The way they were doing it and she got, she got way. I don't say under control, but it's it's just way better than it was and she actually took action. And didn't, you know, didn't on the slide take campaign contributions from Chevron and didn't talk. Tough, I was just thinking as you were talking about Obama, if you go back and look at campaign clips from before he was elected the first time. He's he's talking for single payer, he's talking against war, he's talking about all these things that we. That that we talk about as people on the, I hate the term left, but on the left, all the things that we talk about that are aggressive. He was there and the minute he got in, nah, he checked, those were gone, so that was all the. The neocon cronies came in, were in his cabinet and in his uh as his advisors and it just ran as a. Quasi-Republican administration.
Right, he has an interview where he says that uh, he's like, if this was the late eighties, I'd be like a mainstream Republican. And like that, so but yeah, like it's weird how they all, they'll run on the Green Party platform. Like Obama ran, like you said, on um universal healthcare, anti-war, Bernie the same. And and you see the movements and the the people just, they love that, but for some reason, they just won't go to the party. That is that, right, like we're not, the Green Party is not just gonna be like, oh, we we're anti-war, we're we're this, we're that. And then you come here and then all of a sudden you get in office and don't try to push universal healthcare. And like it would be nice to, like if, say we did do that. Like at least put somebody in office once or twice to see, right, because if we say, oh, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this. The Democrats say they're gonna do and don't, the Republicans, cuz like even Donald Trump, they call him a populist, like you said, you don't like the term left. Like I like the term left and right, I don't, I don't mind it at all, I'm a left-winger, I'm I'm as far left as you can get really. But to me, that is populism, that is the people, right is corporation, right is capitalism and left-wing is, you know, people. Community is communism type stuff, so.
I'll take it, but I just like, I just, once you put a label on something, like I'm not, I'm not saying, well, I don't like the term left because. I have a few views that are way over here out to the quote right, it's not just that, it's just. Who who's deciding what's left enough and what's, and I know it's a spectrum. And so I tell my students this all the time, I teach middle and high school age kids and I and I tell them all the time. Um look, I I and I think this is a detriment, something we do in public schools, that's not a good thing. And that's, we really focus on right answers, wrong answers. That it's either black, white, right, wrong, however, whatever cliche you wanna use there, where most of life is not just one answer or the or the other. Right, and and so when we get to the real world and we got all this gray around, it freaks us out. Nobody wants to deal with it and I think that's one of the reasons why so many people are afraid they won't leave the Democratic Party who don't, who don't. Agree with them, right, who who are more Greens, because our brains have been trained to one or the other. It's just, you have Coke or Pepsi, that's it, you have McDonald's Burger King, that's it. Uh if I can go corporatist for a minute, right, that that's all you have and those are your choices and and. We don't know what to do with something that's not one of those two things and I get that, oh, I've had that so many times, I'm campaigning and I'm talking to someone. And they're like, Dave, that's awesome, yeah, so you're a Democrat, right, and I was like, actually, I'm a Green. Oh, I'm sorry, and here's what they say, I can't vote for you. Not, I won't vote for you, they say can't, it's literally in the heads. That they can't do it, they're not allowed to. I even have people who, because they're registered Democrat in a general election, think they're not allowed to vote for me. Like you're having to do civic education on the street.
Right, so I just drew a blank, there was something I wanted to ask you, um. Oh, so yeah, you're talking about how they said they can't vote for you that that doesn't even register. So one of the things I had, I had thought of when I joined the Green Party is a fifty-state strategy. Like I wrote this little essay and and I sent it out to a few Greens and we sent it out again, but the thing is, I wanna try to get. Everybody, or not everybody, but every state to get as many Greens on the ballot as we can. And I wanna fill the ballot if we can, so that way you see a Green, a Democrat, a Republican on every, every issue or every, you know, line or whatever you call it. And then people, if you see a Green person on every single one. Then it becomes more of a, oh, I I can vote for them because I can vote for them all the way down the ballot and I can give my whole. You know, my whole backing to them where like, you know, you you vote for all the Democrats, but there's one or two Greens that you like. And there's only one or two Greens running, so you you wanna vote for them, but they don't really have a crowd or a backing, right, they don't, you know. Uh so if we can do that, like I wanted, like uh just on the city council, on the school boards. To mayor, to senate, to everything, to state senate, to US senate, all that stuff. But do all the small stuff and all the big stuff, like do you think that would help people be opened up to voting for Green more?
Well, that was, they gotta, yeah, you gotta, they have to be there for you to be able to vote for. No question, it's getting, look, I'm gonna be honest with you. Myself included, to a point, you know, uh we are really a ragged bunch right now, we have been under attack, the Democrats. Look what they did to Jill, they sued her in different states, they they. Even when there was no standing for them to sue, they did anyway, so the campaign money had to be used against for these lawsuits. They attacked us harder than they attacked Republicans. And they they actually had a quote war room against their parties. Cuz you had Jill, uh Celia de uh uh Claudia De La Cruz, I'm saying Celia Cruz. Um and Cornel West, right, it between the three, they had a war room to to fight all three of us, so. It's tough to convince people not only to vote Green and be Green, but to actually run as a Green. I'm the only one in Monroe County that I know of, our petitioning doesn't start until April, but that I know of, who's running in the county. Countywide and it's hard to get people to run for office and that's why even people I don't agree with. I will at least give them credit if they put themselves out there, even the Republicans and the Conservative Party here in New York State. I might not agree with a single thing they say, but man, you put yourself out there, I will give you props for that, I won't give you props for anything else. Putting yourself out there, going to all this stuff, um I I I will give you credit for that. And so I, yes, oh my God, do I want a Green in every election across the country, big and small, yes, absolutely. The ones who have been around, we're we're tired, man. I'm just being honest, I bless you, I am so glad you're here and that you're a Green now and that you're getting into it, Jordan, thank you so much. The I've been around since NATO's first任for president, nineteen ninety-six, I'm tired. I'm glad I'm doing this, I get jazzed up to talk to people and talk issues and you and I, we could do this all day, boy, would my wife be mad. I could do this all day, but yeah, uh look, so here's what happened in New York State, I'll give you an example. About five years ago, give or take, something like that, the governor at the time uh got mad at the Green Party. Uh and just because we ran against um, we ran against him, uh Howie Hawkins, who actually was our candidate for president a few years back. And he ran for governor and did the best a Green ever has done, two hundred and fifty thousand votes, something like that. We got, kept our ballot status all that jazz, so he tried to put a a, he put a bill in, tried to make it law that tripled. What you needed to be to be a party. So it would have eliminated most third parties in New York State and it got ruled unconstitutional. So he did what every other legislator does when they can't get a bill through on its own, he put it in the budget. And nobody's gonna vote against the budget, in New York State, you can put all sorts of junk, if you can just somehow tie it to money. You know, if we do this, it'll save money, bam, he he got passed in the budget. We have been trying to sue ever since unsuccessfully, we even tried taking it to the Supreme Court and they they wouldn't hear us, so. Uh we're not done fighting yet, but right now, we don't have ballot status in New York State. So instead of me having to get fifty Greens to sign my petition. I gotta get twenty-five hundred registered voters in six weeks to sign my petition. So they make it so hard to maintain our ballot status, so now when you go to register to vote. Um you have the choices of parties, Greens not on there now, cuz we don't have our ballot status. So these kids who are registered Green, they're writing in Green, not just they see, oh, I like this one. They they are fit actively writing in Green to be registered Greens now, so there are people who want this to happen. But the Democrats are fighting us every step of the way and we, New York State now has the hardest, the highest bar. Of being a political party in the country. And even harder than some dictatorships in other countries to get on the ballot. We have the hard, I have to jump through the most hoops to get on the ballot for city council than any other place in the country. I'll do it, I've done it once before, but that's hard and that. That's hard and that discourages people from registering Green, helping out Greens, voting for Greens and and Greens actually running. So, yeah, man, we need all hands on board, I I'm just, what, so Jordan, you're sending this stuff out. Just, I I'm not telling you it should be this way, there's gonna be some cynical Greens that are just like. Yeah, good luck, fifty states, how you gonna get on in New York, right? And and I get it, but there's no other choice.
Right, I feel that and but. Somebody's gotta do it, it has to be done at some point in time, if it's gonna be done, right, so just. Like, I used to, um, talk a lot of, talk a lot of, yeah, I used to talk a lot of mess online, right, like, oh, people should do this, people should do that. And people were like, well, do it, well, go do it, and then one day, like in two thousand sixteen, I started a nonprofit where. We went to kids and we brought sports and education to kids where they were, we just went to schools and we went to low income housing. Areas and gyms and stuff and just, we held camps, brought food, taught sports, taught like STEM, all kinds of different stuff. And so, yeah, like, same with the with the parties, with with anything, if if you want something done. At least start to do it yourself and have other people cut, you know, get on board, right, cause I might not be able to finish it, but at least I can start it, get it going. And just have other people come, but like you said, some people are getting tired, right? In my first Green Party meeting, it was, I noticed it was a bit older in age or whatever, the average age was a bit older. And the one of the first things. Yeah, and. But one of the first things they said is, they they're wanting a youth takeover, they wanna be, they wanna be taken over by the people, they want. People to come in, like the Democratic Party, like I said, Bernie's movement, they push it away, but the movement came to the Green Party. Like you said, people are tired, they would be like, oh, come in, this is what we know, we'll sit down, you go ahead and do it, right, you know?
Well, so the back in the day, um, whatever you wanna call that, uh, and again, I keep bad at how many years ago something was, it's a total blur to me. I let, I'll say six, seven years ago, I don't know, a group of young Greens started. Plot, I I'm saying this in a good way, plotting and scheming and they. Brought into the Green Party at the national level, look, enough of this, let's try to fix capitalism stuff, we need to go totally socialist. And in our, in terms of our policies, our our platform, and they jumped through the hoops and some, you know, any big organization. Is tends to have its own kind of version of bureaucracy and the Greens have it too, um, go to the Green National Meeting, you'll see it. And and they stuck with it and pushed through and thanks to these, the young eco-socialists, which have their own uh caucus. Within the national Greens, the uh young eco-socialists, we now are a socialist party. Small S, I guess, I don't know, that our platform at the national level is based on eco-socialism. And no longer fix capitalism, it's to dump it and replace it with something that's people over profit. And that happened because of younger people, not, I'm not super old, not me, it was the the kids doing it. And that was awesome, I was there, man, I helped as much as I could, but no, I let them run with it, cause that's what we needed.
Right, yes, the youth.
The 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 uh uh Green New Deal, Green New Deal is actually green, I know. But Democrats, I won't even say their name, just took it, watered it down and made it a bind, uh, no, non-binding resolution. And that didn't even get passed. But they still get credit for it when it came from Howie Hawkins in the. Uh, two thousands, I wanna say, when he ran for governor in two thousand nine, maybe I'm wrong, two thousand nine. Jill used it in one of her campaigns and it's been kinda sticking around since, but that is a Green Party. Idea, concept, that just got taken and watered down.
Right, yeah, but that's one of the things I said how they watered down the Green New Deal, like that's. It's not green anymore, right? If you water it down, it doesn't do the same thing, that it doesn't do what it's supposed to do, so then it's not the Green New Deal, you know?
The Green New Deal was more in terms of a a society that focuses on. Fighting climate change while doing it within the context, context of a so- a socialist economy. Whereas this, the watered down Green New Deal is just more throwing capitalism again at it. You know, let's see what other businesses can save us.
So one of the things that I'm also trying to do is, I've gone to some DSA uh meetings. And I've noticed DSA is a lot younger, oh, good, they're.
Is it good? But no, I'm being serious, cause one thing I'll give them credit for is they're they're decentralized. That's good, in a way, that's good, because the one here in Rochester, they will do nothing but but help Democrats.
Oh, that's not great.
Right, that's it, and and that was just the conversation, they just announced their endorsements for city council and mayor. Um, and it was all Democrats and I'm like, hey, I never even got an interview.
Oh, our our DSA is far different, our DSA talks about socialism and communism.
Depends on where you are.
And that's, that's one of the things, cause our DSA, they're a lot younger, they. They're like in their twenties and and whatnot, and so I'm like writing, I'm talking to them and whatnot and. I I've been talking to the Green Party people and I've talked to both and one of the things I wanna do is build like a left wing coalition with the DSA, with the PSL, with. Anybody who calls themselves socialist, communist, left, whatever, whatever, and and. Cause people like their labels and their brand, right, they wanna, I I wanna stay D- DSA, but like. The Green Party has more access to the ballots than any other left wing party. So if the DSA comes to the Green Party, if the PSL comes to the Green Party, we can get more people to run. And you just, like, we could put green slash DSA, green slash PSL, it doesn't really matter. But the thing is that if we can all show green, it'll. It'll make it more substantial, right, cause if you see a Green Party mayor, uh, DSA, Senator, uh, PSL. This and that, you don't, you might not know the connection between the three, that they're, that they're all kinda in the same wing or whatever, unless you're very political. But if you see green slash this, green slash this, green slash this, and they all say green next to it, I would assume that most people would. Understand that they're all related to the Green Party, you know?
Right, I, um, so I'll give you a great example of what's coming up, the the Saint Patrick's Day Parade is happening in a couple of weeks. And I, as a candidate, I just made sure I jumped in to make sure I had, was gonna be in that and if you. If you have, if you get a chance, I mean, it's all relatively, if you're in certain spots on the internet, you know that Ireland has really been. Pro Palestine. And because like I was mentioning earlier, how there are Greens who have been working with. Uh, PSL folks and just independent people, uh, a- as well as our local Palestinian community. To to do protests on the genocide that's been happening over in Gaza and actually all of Palestine, um. Because of that connection in Ireland, uh, as soon as I got us and the Green Party into the parade in my campaign. I then reached out and said, hey, look, you know, I know we usually do this, this thing against these war profiteers on Saturday, but. In a few weeks, would y'all be willing to bring the Palestine stuff into the Saint Patrick's Day Parade? Like, we could do signs with like Ir- the Irish flag and the Palestinian flag, because they're really. Working together, I mean, Ireland has really been supportive and. I was thinking they were gonna say, nah, you go ahead, Dave, go to the parade and we'll just see you the next week, and they're all on board. This, yeah, I know, I was like, they were really hip to it and so like, we have people who are Democrats and no party and. PSL folks and who are gonna be marching with the Green Party contingency in this. Uh, my campaign as well, as together in one group that's doing. We'll have my signs, we'll have Green Party signs, we'll have the Palestine stuff and all that's gonna be in our contingency. And probably the first time I've seen anything like this in a really long time in Rochester, it's gonna be pretty cool.
Cool, so that's like that coalition building that I was.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's been tough here, because like I said, the local DSA, they won't do anything but the Democrats, the Democrats.
I don't know what happened, I'm gonna hit stop meeting, but that was Dave. I don't know how to say his last name, but we'll try to get him back.